Here at ten AM. And today's July twenty fourth. And I'd like Gary to leave this mic.
Pledge of will to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with every name and title for all.
Thank you for that. Next up, we got our calendar session. Does anybody have any changes they would like to make? None? No? None? Okay. Um, D's public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to give a public comment? If there's anybody online, raise your virtual hand. Seeing none. E is department updates and E one is going to be the fairgrounds and joining us today is Gary Wertz.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
Good morning, everyone. Are you ready for the Yamhill County Fair? Sorry. Think I'd know better by now. Oregon's oldest fair is ready for you. Just taking the smells of the corn dogs, cotton candy, popcorn, and all the other smells that we have been, that we have had the privilege of bringing to the citizens of the county for a hundred and seventy-one years. The twenty twenty-five edition of the fair starts the thirtieth, which will be a week from yesterday. And from ten AM to eleven PM and goes through August second. Um, we've been very fortunate this year. We've had, we've great created a lot of partners in what we're doing out there. Uh, Parker Megget has allowed the shuttle bus to load and unload patrons in their back lot. So we have a new entry gate. Uh, which will take the, limit the traffic on Lafayette where the people come in. Yamhill County Transit will be doing the shuttle between the lot and then and another lot that we've secured up on Speed McDaniel and Lafayette Avenue, which is a grass field out there that we've got from a farmer, thanks to the commissioner. And we've, what, seven acres that we can park a ton of cars up there. Parking has always been the issue at the county fair. So we think we have a good plan in place. Public Works Department has been another partner. They've helped us come up with a plan for moving the cars down Lafayette Avenue. Using flaggers and changing lanes to keep traffic flowing and the public safe. Uh, they've got this plan approved by the city. So with the traffic will move a lot better through Lafayette during the fair. Um, Sheriff's Department, of course, will be there as they always have been with their booth and doing security for the concerts. Along with working with the rodeo and the Man Up campaign uh, for domestic violence. So they'll, they'll get you, they have purple armbands for that event. Emergency Management's been another big partner who's been working hard to give us an emergency plan since the fair's gotten bigger through the years. And we have, you know, unfortunate things. It's one of the things you have to plan for. And uh, Brian and his team have been very helpful at getting an, an actual plan in place for the fair. So and then they've signed off by all the other departments throughout the county that would have to be responding to anything that happens to the fair. So with those, without those partners, it would be very hard to put the fair on. And I'm really appreciative to them. I want them to know that. Um, so this year we have our lineup, stage lineup. Very pleased to announce that we have Chase Beckham, Easton Corbin, Tone Look with Digital Underground and Alien Ant Farm. And along with that, we have some grounds, what we call grounds acts that will be around the grounds doing when the stage, big stage is not being used. And we have direct from uh, Ripley's Believe It or Not and America's Got Talent. We have the world's champion sword swallower coming. Bet. Uh, it's kind of exciting because he, like I said, he's a world champ. He's one of about fifteen throughout the world. They're recognized. So then along with all that, if you want to be, have the distinction of being the best of the best of Yamhill County, you can enter Blue Raven Farms Pie Eating Contest. Uh, Burt's Barbecues Hot Dog Eating Contest. And Mac Grills Barbecue Contest on Saturday where you can grill your own, grill a couple of ribs. Four H and FFA are all vying, vying for that cup of blue ribbon and bragging rights for a year that the, the best, the best of Yamhill County. Along with these events, we have the youth livestock auction, bulls and barrels with an NPRA rodeo and a big destruction derby. You can see, see all the mom vans being destroyed this year. Our food vendors do pretty well at her, at our fair. We've had, most of them have been with us for fifteen years plus. Um, to give you an idea is just how much food we sell. Our corn dog curly fry vendors sold over seventy-four thousand dollars worth of product last for four, in four days last year. And we, we're going for eighty this year. Um, we have also many static vendors. Um, commercial vendors. New this year, we've created what we called Machinery Row. Uh, we've never done this before in the past and it just snowballed. And we have five machinery vendors bringing tractors, equipment to the fairgrounds. And so we've got a whole new area that we've set up for them. Uh, so we'll have what we call Machinery Row. Um, we work real hard at getting that. We've also have a contest on Friday. Uh, there's a welding contest for high school kids that we're putting on at the fair. Uh, so the fair's, you know, shaping up to be pretty, pretty big, pretty busy. So be, when you decide you want to come to the fair, make sure you plan for a couple hours. Cause you'll need all of it to be able to see everything we've got going on this year. So that, we're, look, any questions about the fair?
Commissioners? I just want to add the, one of my favorite booths is the Oregon Dairy Women's Ice Cream Booth. So looking forward to that and I'm glad that whoever put that together here a couple of years ago to get them in there. It's just a huge draw for us. Um, and then Commissioner Sarah, did you want to touch on the four H program?
Yes. You know, there's been, uh, I've, I've really been interested in getting four H uh, into the foster program. And fortunately Kaylani and Shirley Turner from Reach Northwest, which is a support for resource families, they call them now. But they put together something that is, I think it's wonderful because it's free admission. This is information that's going out to all foster families. And they're going to get this, it's with a punch card. And the kids, uh, the kids will have to, here's a map and they'll, they'll get acquainted with, with all of the events there. And they'll have to go around and visit the horse barn, the swine barn, the sheep goat, all the small animal barns, and they have to get a punch card. So this is their introduction to four H, even if they don't live on farms. But this is how we get these kids involved in four H. They're going to get, once they have their punch card, they're going to get an ice cream cone.
There you go.
And um, it's really exciting because there are going to be posters in each barn. They get to, to punch their card. And uh, it's, I'm really, I'm really excited about this. I think this is going to be huge for the foster care community. So
Great.
So we thank the Kaylani and we thank uh, the fair ambassador, yeah, four H ambassadors. Cause they're going to be working with these kids. So we just wanted to bring that up and Shirley from Reach Northwest.
Right. Fantastic.
I got one, one more thing I would bring up. As you guys know, we've been working hard uh, with the legislature trying to get bills passed. And unfortunately, none of them passed this year. Uh, but the governor did include the fairs in with their, the DAS budget. A House Bill five zero zero six. Uh, each fair is given thirty thousand dollars more than above the fifty-three thousand that they, that we've been getting. So we didn't get cut out completely, but just uh, we're, we're going to keep working on that. So, and that goes, and that's all, you know, put on a fair. Uh, so otherwise, everything else seems to be working out there. The event centers booking into twenty-six already. Um, probably about halfway booked up and even had a request for twenty-seven. So we're, we're keeping it happening out there.
Cool. Thank you, guys. I'll see you in a little bit for my training, volunteering.
Appreciate it, Gary. Thank you. Thanks for coming, Janet.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Gary. Thanks, Kit. The signs look great out on the road. That's the
Get a lot of comments about those. Yeah.
They're phenomenal.
The one at the transit center blew over and punched a hole through it, but you can't tell. We just kind of like stuck it back together. All right. Up next for department updates, uh, we have emergency management and Brian Young. Good morning. Nice to see you again this morning.
Morning.
Half hour or so.
Yeah, yeah. I will say the, the I guess the planning for the fair, I don't, it's like next level this year and I'm feeling really good about it. And not saying that we're probably won't run into some uh, unforeseen issues or not, but this morning it was uh, our flagging team that we hired. It was Brian with emergency management. It was YCOM. Uh, it was Public Works. Um, we're talking about making signs and flaggers and routes coming in and out of parking lot and Jake Foles, who's our new parking manager. It, I feel very, very excited about um the fair and just for the parking, because that's really our, one of our larger issues right out of the gate is trying to get everybody parked. And so I feel really good about it. I hope you feel as good about it as I do.
I do. It's always an environment to, to learn. So we'll, we'll, we'll hone our skills as the years go by.
Yep.
And on the heels of the ATMS training, the um, active threat, active shooter training is perfect because all the jurisdictions learn to work together.
Yes. Yes. So I will start there. Um, the, the current and recently past planning efforts and, and exercise efforts for emergency management in the sheriff's office. Uh, recently we had the opportunity to bring in C three pathways. Uh, who's a contractor for Department of Homeland Security, FEMA, uh, University of Texas, Texas A&amp;M Engineering. And they, they bring a program in place, it, into place that uh, that covers active shooter. This active shooter incident management training, advanced training uh, would, would cost us sixty-two thousand dollars if we were to have to pay for this three-day training. Um, and, and we were able to get it for free, uh, which is, which is awesome uh, through the application. Just a simple application and they're the ones who, who manage all of the behind scenes grant management, assuming that's where the, the funding comes from. Um, so what is active shooter incident management? Um, this training brought together thirty law enforcement, uh, law enforcement, uh, officers and deputies, twenty EMS personnel, five dispatchers, two emergency managers, two PIOs and a helicopter pilot. Let me back up PIOs, Public Information Officers, uh, and uh, and a helicopter pilot to really work on, work through uh, eleven scenarios over the course of three days. Uh, who was involved in this training? Uh, Dayton Fire, McMinnville Fire, Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue, Sheridan Fire, Confederate Tribes of Grand Rond, uh, Fire, McMinnville Police Department, Newburg Dundee Police Department, Yamhill Police Department, Yamhill County Sheriff's Office, uh, Federal Corrections Institute Sheridan from the Bureau of Prisons, Yamhill Communications, vital for communications during an event like this. Uh, Yamhill County Sheriff's Office Volunteer Response Unit. And as I mentioned before, from the private sector, a helicopter pilot uh, who works for Jerry Trimble Helicopters. Very, very local company for us at the McMinnville Airport. So what it was, or what was it? Uh, active shooter incident management worked through eleven scenarios that really escalated over the course of the three-day training. It covered things such as the incident command post, how that looks like, uh, what the communication is from the incident command post and the flow of information into the incident command, command post regarding the, the scenario or the, the tasks at hand. Um, it also incorporated what I call the triple T or the tactical triage and transportation portion of this vital to collect and be that um, be that flow of information to the incident command post. Uh, you can't, uh, you can't have an operation when you overwhelm your incident command post with information. They have to be able to make tactical and, and coordinated decisions uh, regarding the incident. Where do you place resources? How are you going to effectively manage and, and um, and treat those who, who may be injured uh, during the, during the incident and get them out to the vital treatment that they need. Uh, it also covered the staging of resources and the management surrounding that, a very critical component of, of incident management. Um, we have to be able to understand how staging areas work, the, the information that comes from there regarding the, the resources that are available, the resources that are incoming and, and how to de, de, best deploy those. Those resources could be equipment, um, right? The fire trucks, the ambulances, the police, the police vehicles. Um, but it's also uh, the resources in staffing, right? The, what do the rescue tasks for, task force look like? Um, you know, when you talk about rescue task force, a vital component of active shooter incident management, those are the folks that go in um, to the scene and, and work in, in warm zones, what they call warm zones to, to quickly triage and, and move patients to the casualty collection points in a safe and efficient manner so they could get out in that golden hour of, of uh, treatment. Um, and the big, the big one which uh, which can be a complex, uh, a complex situation is area command. Uh, what does area command look like? Um, and, and that's when you have two or more incident locations and the management of those, because each location is going to have its own incident command post. And how do, how do you effectively manage your, your resources if you have two incident command posts drawing from one staging area? And that's where um, the vital training in area command is needed. Uh, it allows the, the area commander, the, the, the overall, the big cheese, if you will, to, to make those tactical decisions uh, regarding the placement of resources. Um, and, and really putting the, the trust in his incident commanders and the rescues, rescue staff to um, to do their job um, and, and, and have the tools necessary to be uh, successful. Uh, I, I, I thought it was kind of, kind of funny. Uh, one of the, the instructors there said that the area commander really should be able to, to do his job while holding a cup of coffee. Um, and, and the concept is that this person is the brains and the tactical um, coordinator that, that is not behind the scenes, but is, is overseeing the scenes. Um, it's, it's, it's a pretty uh, pretty complex coordination, but, but one that uh, I hope to see we get more training in the future. Um, as I, as I mentioned, as this, as the scenarios progressed, they, they turned into complex and coordinated attacks in multiple locations. Um, and it was, it was interesting to see the communications and really see kind of the silos starting to come down or being broken down. And when I talk about silos, we talk about the disciplines, right? We all train within our disciplines and we, we know what to do. Uh, Sheriff's Office trains on, on moving through buildings and making tactical insertions uh, to try and mitigate threats. But, but um, you know, how does that look like with, with fire and EMS response? Fortunately, we, we do have um, some of those programs in place and we do have uh, protocols in place that are, that speak to just that. How do fire and EMS work together um, to, to accomplish those goals? So it's nice to see that those pre-training, those silos had started to come down. Um, and then now it's just a, a matter of continuing the effort and, and honing those skills that, that uh, we're gaining each and every time we, we meet uh, in our disciplines. Um, you know, it really talks to about integrated response. You know, what is, what is the integration of people that you normally don't work with and communicate on a daily basis? We all have our, our different radio frequencies, our, our different uh, jargon, if you will, and, and how do we break those down so we, we can actually sit next to each other and communicate in a common language uh, efficiently and, and be able to, to accomplish those goals. Really, the mantra behind this training is, is to really stop the bleed. That's a program that's put in place to train uh, train responders to, to get the critical care to the patients. Uh, and what they, what they also tag on to this is, is um, stop the killing, stop the dying, right? We all see the, the the response changes over, over time on how we, I speak from a law enforcement experience, respond to these, to these uh, critical incidents, you know, and it goes all the back, all the way back to Columbine. And the, the mistakes that were made then, but you know, those, that's what they were trained to do at the time. It's not taking away from those responders. Um, but, but it's, we, we learn from those mistakes. It's no different than, than reading any other after action report. Um, whether it's, it's something here in, in, in government and action that we take a response to uh, to plane crashes, right? And, and NTSB reports uh, and, and learning from the mistakes of others. Um, the support from the Board of Commissioners is truly appreciated um, in, in this effort. Um, everybody was, was really um, happy to see this, this come to the county. It was an opportunity to see the, the responders that, that you guys put the trust in every day. Uh, working to hone their skills and, and really advance the, the critical missions that we all work under. You know, it was mentioned that it, it was it by one of the instructors that they, they don't see um, commissioners going to these trainings and, and other elected officials. And the truth, the support that, that we get is, is truly phenomenal. I appreciate that. Um, how did we bring this training to, to uh, Yamhill County and, and how do we get it back? Cause I'm excited to bring it back. I have zero issues with coordinating as much work as it was, kind of like wrangling cats. Um, with the, with the, with the staffing and the time of year, um, you know, uh, it was, it was a huge lift for our, for our partners in this to staff, to staff the, the class. Um, due to, to, you know, pre, pre-authorized vacations, callouts for, for fires and, and mutual aid assistance in other parts of the state, um, which was evident during the, during the class. We lost a couple of, of, of students due to a callout. Um, it's just the nature of the business. Hopefully we can coordinate that in the future to be in a, in a slower time of year, if there is such a thing. Um, so Carol Van Wert found this training in twenty twenty-three. Um, and quick conversations between the two of us. I said, yeah, let's, let's just go ahead and apply for it. She did. And we waited, didn't hear anything, didn't hear anything. And then out of the blue, an email came from C three pathways. They happened to be coming through the area on their way from one training to another and had a week available. Had a week available. Try and keep my words less mumbled there. Uh, had a week available of training uh, to offer and wanted to know if we wanted it. Um, I quickly said yes and then asked for permission. Sorry, Sheriff. Knowing, knowing that, that, you know, the, the administrations of all the, the agencies involved in this would welcome this with open arms. Um, it was, it, I, I knew it would be a, would be a hit. And I think that there were some eyes opened regarding this, this training and, and the importance of it. So some of the things that, you know, I mentioned earlier, the sixty-two thousand dollar price tag. I've already started conversations with uh, Grants Coordinator at the state level regarding grants for this. Um, and if you think about the state homeland security grant and the terrorism nexus, um, that, that it is required to qualify for those grants, this is right up that alley, right? And, and it also addresses some of the things that, that were issues during this, um, during this training or that came up staffing this training. Um, you know, what, what is with the staffing issues that, that all disciplines have? Um, what does it look like to fill or backfill? And it looks like grant, no, no guarantees on this yet, but it sounds like uh, grant dollars can be utilized to pay for backfill so, so folks can be dedicated to this training uh, throughout the three-day, uh, three-day event. Um, so more to come on that. Well, uh, I'm happy to jump all over that grant. This is a, a, a grant that uh, you know, we'd manage in-house if, if approved, but it's one that I will uh, sing till my retirement days is, is needed for this. Because it not only does it bridge over from incident ma, or uh, active shooter incident management, but it can, it can also be utilized in the incident management of other large incident ma, or active shooter incident management, but it can, it can also be utilized in the incident management of other large-scale events. And I think the big thing on the the landscape in Oregon is wildfires, right? How do, how do law enforcement and fire communicate evacuations? And what does that communication look like? And and what do the partnerships look like with not only our our private partners, Jerry Trimble Helicopter for the, for this training, but other private partners that that might be needed for for those responses? So it's, it's a win-win, in my opinion. I will stop there before I go on to the next piece to, in in case you have any questions regarding that.
Well, first of all, kudos for that. And they did let me know that the price has gone up to 75,000. So you got a smoking deal, since we were the only ones in Oregon to get this training. And it was really impactful to see we actually had YCOM dispatchers there along with all of the other first responders. And then also, when you come to a reunification after an event, that was really amazing to see how complex that is. People coming to try to find their kids at school. And how the nexus of county services, HHS, Public Works, Transit, how do we get people out of an area, into an area, transport them, get them back with their kids? Let them know perhaps their child had had been the, that, you know, it had been a fatality. This is all stuff you don't think about. So thanks for putting it together. Thank you, Sheriff, for allowing this to happen. It was very impressive to see.
It was, and I agree. I, and down to just some of the smallest details that you would never think. And these guys are pivoting on as like I'm showing up. And so I'm making the rounds to the area management scene. And they're like, oh, we have a commissioner here. He, you guys need to be prepared. He's going to have questions for you and whatever. It's just that pivoting on and it's all role-playing, but it's the importance of cycling through that. And we had PIOs that were going up there that weren't naturally PIOs. And so they, they were going through the motions of training and seeing how that was. And I remember one of the trainers were partway through one of the scenarios. And he's like hollering from the corner of the gym, like he's one of the news channels that needed an update. I'm like, I'm K two news. There's nobody here to give me answers. Pretty soon here comes the PIOs from the area management station and they come over and they give their update. Absolutely phenomenal. I mean, I was just blown away on how it was. And I'm really looking forward to seeing how we can figure this out for biannual, annual basis or whatever. I think this is very important.
Yeah, thank you for that. The PIO section is, I I don't want to be a PIO.
Neither did they.
Yeah, yeah. The prepared statements are not, are not my forte. I think extemporaneously speaking is is a little bit better, but that doesn't make a PIO.
Yeah.
Thank you for all the work that you guys put into this. I mean, your Sheriff, you and your office. I mean, I know how important this, this is, and you don't think you need it until you need it. I think that this being prepared and doing it annually or biannually, I think is, would be the right thing to try to work, strive for, for everybody. And I even just getting those partners together, what amount of work that would have to be. So, great job.
Yeah, thank you. And kudos to the partners, man. If this, you know, I I pointed out at the end of the class that the success of this training is not just bringing the instructors in, but also the engagement of the students. And seeing the level of engagement was just huge. Everybody was glued to the scenarios and the the teaching points. And and you can tell the the lift and for those in the the virtual world, I'm holding up a book that's, you know, three quarters of an inch thick of of curriculum that's that's covered in three days. So there's a lot of information to digest and and, you know, we couldn't do it without, without the students. It was, it was huge.
One question. Is there any like, when you are coming down off of the high, right? I mean, because you're talking about some really awful things. I have friends that are teachers that have to go through training every year, you know, and right before school starts. It's always the worst day of their, their year. And then when they do the drills at school, you know, how effective they are. Would you guys get a chance to like, all right, now we're going to take some breaths or we're going to, you know? Was there any of that that happened in the training and in coming down to go home, you know, after the training?
Yeah, no, no, nothing specifically toward dealing with with that coming, you know, the the being amped up afterwards. But but, you know, you bring up an excellent point, Commissioner. You know, the schools, they're a vital partner in this. You know, Sheridan, Sheridan School District was huge in allowing us to utilize their property, Faulkner Chapman Elementary in this, in this training. And they, they continue to be a great partner and and want us to be involved with with them. You know, my hope is that this spring, springboards into other conversations, tabletop exercises with the other partners who who this course is not designed for, right? How do we, how do we talk about this type of incident in an effective manner with schools? How do we talk about this with with hospitals? And and when you talk about the surge, you know, patient surge, diverts and and all of those things that will put pressures on that medical system? You know, so I think having the conversations ahead of time is, it it puts you in a good position to understand each other when, when, when the time comes and hopefully it doesn't, you know? But but we have to be prepared for it.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
So if that's it, we'll go on to the next planning slash exercise update. The big thing on the the immediate horizon for emergency management is is the fair planning. Thank you to Gary and Janet for their continued open lines of communication and understanding as as the complexities of bringing outside response agencies together regarding this mass gathering, right? This is a mass gathering in in Yamhill County and it's something that that we need to be prepared for. I think the number is about 40,000 last year over the four days that that come together. That's a, that's a large number of people that come together from all over the region and and the state. We have folks from all over. We've got a a rodeo that draws, you know, competitors from from all over the nation. And and it's a destination for some. It, and I think it's just a testament to to what the fair has done in the past to get to this, get to this point. As Gary mentioned, the the fair has grown over the years. And and you know, what started out as as incident action planning for, more for exercise for our volunteer staff, YCSO volunteer staff, staffing the booth and and just being that extra set of eyes has has kind of morphed and and been accepted as a planning effort for the fair as as a whole. And when I say the planning effort for the fair, it's not for the operations of the fair. I'm not a fair person. I don't know how a fair runs. I'm not dealing with vendors or anything like that. I don't want to deal with vendors. But but how do we plan for those those unforeseen incidents that happen? That also takes a lot of of coordination and and communication with outside entities, you know, McMinnville Police Department, Yamhill Communications, McMinnville Fire District and and ultimately all the response agencies in the, in the county. You know, they, they, the, the incident action plan is sent to to each, each agency in the county for them to have an understanding of of what is going on and what the plans are as far as, you know, a medical plan. What does a medical plan look like? Where's the nearest hospital? What's their level of trauma? Or what level of trauma center is it? And and what kind of injuries can they, can they, can they take? It it's kind of a cool, cool thing to to see and and it it too is growing and and morphing. And 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 we're learning from each year on how to better plan for the following year. And and things are changing, you know, even on down to the parking. How does parking work? And how do, how does parking affect the outside agencies? You know, McMinnville Police, Yamhill County Sheriff's Office, responding fire agencies and EMS agencies if they're, if they're needed at the, at the fair. You know, what do those look like? Because they're, they need to be integrated in some, some way, shape or form to be able to to perform that or provide that that effective and efficient response. You know, this year we'll, we'll have, just as in years past, have Yamhill County Sheriff's Office volunteers staffing all the gates as they do in the years past. Critical component to the fair. It it alleviates some of the pressures on on fair, on the fair to staff it themselves and allow folks to to enter and and exit the fair efficiently. So it's, it's, it's really nice to see. I fully expect that next year there'll be some changes to the incident action plan and and more partners will be brought on board in the, in the planning process. You know, we learned from this also, right? If we don't learn from, from what we put together this year and apply those, those lessons learned in the following year, then then, you know, why are we doing it? So it's, it's, it'll be, it'll be exciting to see. So any questions on the fair?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. I guess one of the things, one of the things that I like is going back to the fair, I guess, is is part of the incident action plan is is developing maps and zones inside the 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 fair itself. And and that was run through Gary and his staff on on it for acceptance. And we broke it down into zones that allow for, for us to identify and pass along areas where people may be injured or assistance may be needed. It's, it's just kind of cool seeing, seeing those, those things come together. So moving on, you know, we talk about, we talk about plans and and along with training and exercise, right? That allows us to to focus on response at the time of an incident, right? You know, if we don't have those planning efforts and those trainings and exercises done beforehand, then we we can't be as effective as we need to be. So with that, some of the plans are the planning efforts that I see on the horizon. We'll start with the hazard mitigation plan. As you're, you're all aware, our hazard mitigation plan, which is a FEMA-approved plan that is needed to qualify for federal funding, that that funding has been, been delayed, but our, our plan expires in December. The, the, I got an update the other day. FEMA does have our application. And and if you look at some of the conversations that our vendor, the University of Oregon, has had with Oregon Emergency Management is, it's a great sub-application, so it looks good. They're good at what they do. We love having them as a partner in developing updates for this plan. You know, Deschutes County has recently had the, a very similar application that has gone up the chain and and the turnaround time was only a couple of months to approval. So fingers crossed, we're looking at at a quick turnaround on that so we can get that that process started. If 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 we do bump up against or exceed the December expiration of the current plan, there is a process in place at the state level where an application for an extension, an emergency extension can be applied for. Because just because it it passes an expiration date doesn't mean that the current document is not a sound document. It's just, you know, making sure that, I think the, the the need for the five-year update on that is 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 to cover any updates or changes in federal level, federal level requirements that come down the pike. So fingers crossed that we're going to hear, hear from that soon. And then the coordinating efforts will start on that to bring in, to bring in agencies, you know, every agency, every city in the, in the county, the the county itself, special districts such as McMinnville Water and Light, you know, bring them into the, into the loop to to make sure that they're covered in this and and can qualify for for federal, federal funding for projects if if they need it. Any questions on hazard mitigation plan?
No.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to the COOP plan. I, I, I see this coming down the pike as another internal coordination piece that is, is coming. We have a vendor identified for that. And just as in in past updates, it would, it would require the departments that are affected by the COOP, which is continuity of operations plan to to come to the table to help develop, which most of it's already developed. It's just archived until we get back up and running. We'll, you know, get together with all the departments and sit down and and in in develop those plans. Another exciting planning project that has just kicked off is, is with a company called Genesis. Genesis is an evacuation software company that is on contract, if you will. There's agreements in place at the state level and through the Oregon Department of Human Services Office of Resilience and Emergency Management. It's their emergency management within ODHS. They have a contract with Genesis. And what this, what this program does is it, it breaks the county into zones, evacuation zones. And it's, it's more, at the onset is more algorithm, algorithmic zones. And and that's where collaborative effort from those response partners is needed to really craft or get, get some ground truth onto what those zones look like. Because there might be, there might be some impediments to effective evacuation. You know, there could be ridge lines or roads that don't go into certain areas, that type of thing. So getting those response partners to, to have a seat at the table and and identify users of this, this, this tool is paramount for it, its success. And and one of the nice things about this program, it integrates nicely with Yamhill County Alerts, right? And I think we all know the, know the name Everbridge. That's the, the, the name of the product. But but locally, we are Yamhill County Alerts and that's how we alert our citizens in the event of an emergency. You know, we want folks, and it was, we saw a huge influx of folks opting into that program in 2020, September Labor Day of 2020. We all want to forget that time, right? The fires that kicked off pretty much statewide, devastating fires. You know, so we, we got a huge influx of folks that that signed up for that, which is awesome. It's a great tool to be able to, to identify or or communicate with them. So this system integrates well with that. Polygons or zones can be uploaded directly into that, that alerting software. And then effective communication on evacuations can go out. Another thing this, this program can do is it, it can integrate with GIS information, geospatial information systems, information to to have layers inside that, that program to be able to, to give responders the critical information that they need of of what's in that area. I'm not a GIS person. I won't, won't pretend to be one. But it, it's, when you can identify critical infrastructure and key resources through those layerings, it, it can certainly augment response to to protect those assets and and ensure that we we can keep those vital services open for for the, the public. I think the big thing, big thing here to mention also is it's free. It's free for us. There are no contracts or agreements that need to be made. It is there for us to use. I'm, I'll be holding a meeting with stakeholders and collaborators on the 7th of August. And we hope to, what they call publish, which, which doesn't mean anything really right now. We hope to publish the information by August 12th. It doesn't, just because it's published doesn't mean that work can't, can stop or does stop in the crafting of those zones, because I think it's a, it's an, it's like that moving target, right? We have to always look at it and and always make sure that the information that we have within that program is sound, you know, whether it be through reviews or or meetings with, with the agencies that are responsible within those zones to make sure that what is in there is actually still true, that there hasn't been many changes to to things that might impede the response. That's all I have on the plans. Any, any questions on the plans?
On the GIS front, I just want to make sure that you'd be in communication with Brian at our assessor's office to, I guess, guide in how that's going to interact, your GIS interact with our in-house GIS now.
Yes, I would. Yeah, I've talked to Assessor Worf a couple of times regarding, regarding this. And yeah, their office is is front of mind in in that effort.
Fantastic.
One quick question. The EMPG grant, my understanding is, is that while it's held up that there might be money in the E-board, have you gotten any updates on whether that would happen at the state side?
Well, you segued right into my next couple of topics here. So, yeah, no worries, no worries. That's awesome. It's a, it's a, it's a perfect topic. So EMPG, the Emergency Management Performance Grant, it's an annual grant that comes down from FEMA through the pass-through entity of the state. And and we're awarded, historically, I think, recently, we were awarded we were awarded roughly $88,000 per, per year, uh, regarding that to go to offset salary, salaries in our case. As with the, the grants being, um, being paused at the federal level, Emergency Management Performance Grant, um, has been up in the air. There's no official news, um, but I think that, uh, that with the rumors on the State Homeland Security Grant being released in late August, I, I think that EMPG might be, um, might be on the heels of that. As far as funding that's available, um, I'm not aware of, of any through, through the board. Um, I'm, I'm hoping that the, the state, if there isn't EMPG funding available for us, I'm hoping that the state does have that available, because it's, it's, uh, it's a, it's a nice piece to offset, you know, some of the, some of the costs in emergency management programs. And, and, you know, we've been well-supported, Emergency Management has been well-supported, um, by the Board of Commissioners, who see it as a vital component in, in emergency response. So thank you for that. Um, I hope to have more information soon, and, uh, you will certainly be kept in the loop on that.
Thank you.
Thanks. All of those words, and I'm finally done. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much.
I'm good.
Awesome.
You got great notes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Sheriff.
Thanks, Sheriff. Appreciate Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Don't go far.
All right, we're moving on to work session, there is none. G is consent agenda, looks like we have two items on there. I would move approval. Any further discussion?
None for me.
None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Uh, that brings us to H is old business, there's none. I is other business. I one is consideration of approval of amendment number one to an agreement between Yamhill County and Summit Food Services, updating the price per meal by 10% retroactive to July 1, 2025.
I would move approval.
Motion's been made, any further discussion?
None.
All I would say is that you probably don't want to negotiate too much with our sheriff, I think he's done a good job on this, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Uh, I choose consideration to authorize Yamhill County Sheriff's Office to apply, and if awarded, acceptance of the National Criminal History Improvement Program, grant available through Oregon State Police in the amount of $73,931.55 to be used to purchase and install three fingerprint scanning stations retroactive to July 1, 2025 through September 30, 2025.
This is, um, our current, once, well, I'll let the sheriff describe, he's making his way up here to squeeze back in that chair.
I just came up in case you did have any questions, but our current fingerprint scanner, uh, service provider, uh, is, is no longer, uh, going to go through all of the steps to be in compliance with state of Oregon requirements, uh, so we are, we are going to have to do something, uh, because we won't be able to utilize the one that we have now, uh, thanks to Sergeant Gardner in the jail and Captain Brown. Uh, this grant, uh, is available, uh, this would cover the entirety of the cost, uh, based off of your recent tour of the facility, you know that we've implemented the DUI processing rooms, this would actually increase from two stations currently to three, so that we can actually have that capability right there in the DUI processing room, uh, for fingerprint, uh, scan. So this grant would cover, uh, 100% of the cost of transitioning to a new service provider and new equipment to update the main booking desk in the jail, the DUI processing room, and the court security, um, processing, uh, over here on the, the main floor of the courthouse.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Did we have a motion on that? We have a motion, any further discussion?
None.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Item I three is consideration of approval of an agreement between Yamhill County Health and Human Services and Catholic Community Services of the Mid Willamette Valley and Central Coast, Inc., for youth respite services in the not to exceed amount of $4,000,487,160.40 retroactively effective July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, with annual automatic renewals not to exceed 10 years from the commencement date unless otherwise terminated.
This is a vital service, uh, we, Catholic has capacity there for emergency respite, uh, with foster parents on, onsite for youth that are experiencing serious psychiatric or emotional and behavioral issues. And, uh, it's, it's one of those places where there really is no Plan B, so we appreciate them, so I would move approval.
Motion's been made, any further discussion?
None.
None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Uh, moving on to item I four, consideration of approval of grant agreement number 35867 between Yamhill County Transit and the Oregon Department of Transportation, Public Transportation Division for stiff formula funds in the amount of $5,480,675.30 effective upon full execution through June 30, 2027, and authorizes staff to finalize the agreement.
I would move approval.
We have a motion, any further discussion?
None.
None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Commissioner?
I said aye.
Okay, sorry.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Gets a little harmonious.
Uh, moving on to item I five is consideration of approval of a grant number 35788 between Yamhill County Transit and the Oregon Department of Transportation, Public Transportation Division for 5310 funding in the not to exceed amount of $763,525 with a $87,389 match effective upon full execution through June 30, 2027, and authorizes staff to finalize the agreement.
I would move approval.
We have a motion, any further discussion?
None.
None.
None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Uh, moving on to item I six, consideration of approval of a grant agreement number 35885 between Yamhill County Transit and the Oregon Department of Transportation, Public Transportation Division for 5311 CARES funding in the not to exceed amount of $270,000 with a $211,455 match effective upon full execution through June 30, 2026, and authorizes staff to finalize the agreement.
I would move approval.
Motion has been made, any further discussion?
None.
None.
None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Um, okay, that brings us to item I seven, this one's a little bit confusing, um, I'm just gonna ha- hand, uh, this is gonna be, uh, item I seven's gonna be a walk-on, so this is gonna be a letter, uh, opposing House Bill 3133, and we've had two commissioners, uh, submit, and so I'm gonna hand each one of you, each others, unless you already have them.
Copy.
Okay.
I read, I read both, yeah.
Okay, good. So this is what I'm gonna do.
Yeah.
Um, I'm gonna go with, they're both fantastic, and I love the enthusiasm that everybody's bringing this to oppose it, because it's absolutely ridiculous what the state's doing with this, uh, 3133. It's gonna really throw a kink into a lot of our agrotourism. I won't get into a lot of specifics, you guys can read the letters in the packet, um, but I am gonna go with Commissioner Sterrett's, because it lists.
Who's there first?
Well, I'm, the reason is, it lists the House Bill 3133, so, but both fantastic letters, so. Um, do you want a copy of which one, or will you guys be able to discern?
I'll be able to discern that, and so, we can, we haven't put anything in the packet yet, because it's, this was a walk-on, so if, if there's agreement on one of which letter, we'll make sure that that's uploaded into the packet upon approval, and we finalize it, put it on letter.
Perfect.
Everything.
I would make a motion to approve Commissioner Sterrett's, uh, opposition letter to House Bill 3133. Any further discussion?
None.
None for me.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, thank you both for doing that. And then... That brings us to J, public hearings, there is none. K announcements. Commissioner King.
This week I met with, um, Regional Solutions and Sheridan Fire, trying to find that, um, path, um, just keeping that ball moving with the ambulance and the, just how Sheridan has gotten them into that financial, um, state, and I think that a lot of other districts are gonna, are feeling the same thing, but Sheridan is just feeling it a little bit faster, so I can't say that we came up with any, the, any real meat yet, but just continuing that conversation. Yamhill Derby Days was this weekend, and I got to watch the parade with, um, Mayor King and, uh, hung out in the park for a couple hours. I love, that's one, I, I love that one, it's, it's a pretty fun one to watch. And be a part of, uh, New Brook City Council this week, not a lot on their agenda, but they're, uh, trying to pursue removing the railroad, um, that goes down Blaine Street. The city's been, uh, responsible for taking care of that for some time, and so they're just looking at the scope of work to be able to remove those. Let's see here, had a chance to sit down with Kevin and talk, uh, social media stuff, thanks, putting that together. Met with the sheriff and around jail maintenance and trying to prioritize their liability versus, uh, compliance and just what, what the overall needs are, there's obviously a lot of needs, um, with our jail. Cynthia, Commissioner Johnson and I, um, on some potential tenant improvements onto that building there on Durham Street. And then, of course, the three of us took our tour of, uh, Alhambra. I love the success story that they have and just seeing the, the hard work that, you know, that goes into that family business that they have, just generational and, and, and moving, recreating themselves and trying to keep up with the times. The smaller wineries like that will definitely, and growers, you know, grape growers are gonna have a really hard year, probably a couple of them. Um, Lipstick, yesterday, Justice, uh, the Justice Reinvestment Program, the Phase Two, talked about that grant agreement, um, and approved, approved that. Um, and then looking forward to Old Fashioned Festival this weekend, uh, I think it kicks off today and goes through Sunday with a car show at the end. Amity has their, um, festival this weekend as well, and their pancake feed, um, so lots going on this weekend.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Sir.
Last night, uh, was in Carlton for a listening session regarding the right-of-way, um, in, within city limits. There were about 60, 65 people, and I want to thank the mayor and the city manager for putting together such an efficient meeting. Folks from the community came to talk about what they would like to see in that particular part of the corridor, and we talked about what the options were, and they all seemed to say pretty much they want an area where they can walk through the city and kind of a, sort of just a, a little walking path. So we talked about that, we talked about some of the options, more to be discussed at the city level, and then they would like to include the county, but I did answer some questions about, uh, the, the larger corridor and the, the county's, um, lack of staff to be able to do the maintenance there, and then what some of the options were going forward. So that was a, a, a pretty good meeting. Wanted to say thank you to our, our Economic Development Manager, there were some, uh, little, little bumps in the road regarding the early childhood education program at Chameca, we were able to work through some of that, make sure some of the stipends, um, issues got worked out. And also, there was a related issue to someone who needed housing in that program. And I just have to say that always, the mission is always there, and they get no public funding, but whenever I have called them in a crisis situation with somebody, in this particular case, it was a woman and a baby and her husband living in their car, and the mission was, send them over, we've got a place for the dad, place for the baby, and we'll take care of them. So I can't say enough about them. The CPRD, uh, as we know, we have new chair, we have a new chair and new board members, they talked about their strategic plan and some of the capital project plans that they're working on. They talked about tax revenues and a proposed trail plan, which has been in the works since 2010, and that cost has been estimated around 76 to 79 million dollars, but that was back in 2010 figures. So, uh, it was, uh, the, just, the comment was made that this is a free recreation. Well, it has to be maintained, and in 2025 or 2030, dollars, it's probably gonna be double that. They talked about the problems they have with maintenance of their parks, and they also talked about a property tax levy that they would like to discuss going forward, uh, so that folks can, um, help with, um, you know, basically throw in for maintenance for playgrounds, parks, and ballfields. The Sanders Estate in Dundee, they're talking about a community center, a farmer's market there, was an update on the bypass trail, and Jason Fields is the, gonna continue as a liaison to the county, and I will continue as liaison to CPRD. CCO meetings, uh, talked about funding issues and basically cutting, cutting costs, belt tightening, focusing on reducing administrative costs and core functions, Housing Authority. We talked a little bit about, uh, what's going on at Stratus, that's moving ahead, ahead of schedule. Also, there is a community development block grant program that has expanded to include, um, houses that need repair instead of just manufactured homes. Really good success stories with some of the folks who've graduated from the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. These are folks who had nothing and walk out with escrow, with money in escrow for down payments for houses. So lots going on this week, and, uh, lots more to come.
Thank you very much. Uh, last Thursday, we had a Fair Board meeting, um, getting really close to fair, which, uh, Gary mentioned, starts next Wednesday. Uh, we did our last walk-around kind of checklist, uh, there'll still be other things to come, but, uh, just want to reiterate how I well, or to at least the best of our abilities, whether it's the Fair Board or Public Works or the Sheriff's Department, how everybody's so engaged, our fire department is so engaged on pre-planning for this fair, it's probably the best that I've seen so far, and we're gonna continue to grow on that and get even better. Last Friday, uh, I had the privilege of introducing the Fair Ambassadors again, um, this time it was at the Shaheenland Valley, uh, Chamber Event, which is their Friday greeters, and it was at the Penguin Productions, uh, Studio or Theater, which is second floor at the, uh, Cultural Center there in Newburgh. Went well, um, ambassadors, they have their, they have their, uh, speeches down pretty good now, and, uh, they can pivot when they get questions on it, and, uh, it's always interesting to, uh, listen to them when they start getting to the concerts, because I'm sure when those kids are rattle them off, they have no idea who they are. Last Saturday was Derby Days, uh, Commissioner King brought that up, we, same old with every other, uh, parade, we take the ambassadors around and, and, uh, this one was a little bit different, because we get to stop about halfway through, which makes it the shortest, longest parade in Yamhill County. But we stop, uh, the ambassadors get off the truck, and then we have one ambassador on a horse, and they all gather, and then they, they give their speech, uh, to the whole audience while we're standing there right in the middle of the road, so pretty cool and very engaging with that parade. Monday was Sheridan City Council, uh, they updated their council procedures to designate the interim city manager as their, um, or designee as their PIO, um, and after three years, they finally have, or have settled on a new logo, so Sheridan will have a new logo. It looks actually pretty cool. They're settled on the design, they're actually gonna go, I think, one more meeting, actually figure out different colors and stuff for it, but for now, they're gonna, they've done a design, and they'll start plastering them all over their Public Works vehicles. Uh, Tuesday was McMinnville City Council meeting, uh, they chose, uh, Adam Garvin, their former council president, to enter, uh, a contract with him or contract negotiations to be the interim city manager. They also approved two kennels with the Homer Bound Pets, uh, they approved the rec center, so you'll see that on the November ballot if you live within the city limits of McMinnville. Uh, they raised their building fees by 2.9%. Wednesday, we had the Alhambra Tour, you guys already covered that, um, I'm gonna stack a little bit on the Lipstick meeting from yesterday. The Justice Reinvestment Grant formulations have changed just a hair, so the funding's up statewide a little bit. Um, Yamhill County's allocation is 2.17% of the 47 roughly million, which brings our total to about 1,013,000. Um, and just some interesting points on that, when the victim services portion is 101,000 of that, and so they'll split that between Juliet's house and Henderson house. and so they'll split that between Juliet's House and Henderson House. And heads up for next. Lipstick meeting, which is going to be on September 24th. We're going to get Ryan Keck in there from the Criminal Justice Commission to do this kind of an update. So that'll be good. Let's see here. Tomorrow night, we have Dayton Old Timers Parade, starting at 7:00. And then we have Newburgh Old Fashion Festival, at least I do, for a parade that starts 10:00 AM Saturday. Dayton's tomorrow at 7:00. We have to start at 6:00 for judging or whatever, so it should roll out at 7:00. Next Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Yamhill County Campus Building or Government Facilities, whatever we're calling it, chat with the chair, 6:00 PM. And then next Wednesday's the first day of the fair. That's all I got. You got anything to add, Ken?
Yeah, the, just, we've got some milestones and some changes. I'll just say for the Government Services Building, that's, we've been kind of referring to it. The big thing is you should, middle of next month, we're scheduled to have the signage change on the building. But I think the biggest thing I kind of wanted to highlight as far as a milestone is, at this point, we are occupying three floors of the building.
Nice.
You know, so we've been steadily, we've, trying to move in for those that don't require major improvements, but we currently are IT and HR divisions are on the first floor. Second floor, of course, we got planning and tax and assessment, and on the third floor, our finance division and HHS Finance Division is moving next week. So at this point, we're occupying portions of all three floors of that building, so. And more to come.
Yep, cool. Thank you. All right, with that, I'm going to close it out at 11:06. Thank you all very much.